Buenas en hafa de everyone. This public hearing by the Committee on Maritime and Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens is hereby called to order. Today is Thursday, December 28th, and the time now is 2:00 PM. For the record, in accordance with the open government law, notices for this hearing were sent on December 20th and again on December 26th. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the Guam Legislature's website and in the Guam Public Notice website. Joining me for this afternoon's hearing are committee members Senator Roy Canata and Senator Telo Taidegui. Sidoos Masi colleagues for joining. I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct for those in attendance. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide the legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Those testifying will be allowed to present written or oral testimony. Once you are done, please remain in the room for questions or additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the nature of the agenda. The current agenda is the appointment of Mr. Christopher Elsie Duennias to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents. The Chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify, and before speaking, individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall state their name for the record. The order of questioning will begin with Senators on the panel, and there will be a second round of questions if needed. Personal inference about the character or motive of any Senator or individual testifying will not be permitted. Any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing. We are now on the appointment of Mr. Christopher Elsie Duennias to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents. The government and control of the University of Guam is vested in its Board of Regents. The Regents have general supervision over the university and the control and direction of all funds of and appropriated to the university. The Board is responsible for setting the policies governing the duties, conditions of employment, compensation, salary, and emoluments of all employees of the university. The Board is also responsible for the submission of an annual budget to the legislature. While the Board has the authority to delegate such powers as it may deem appropriate, it retains the ultimate responsibility for exercising its powers. I'd like to now call upon those who signed up to testify. Ms. Julie Laximana, Student Regent, Vice Provost Marlena Pangolinan, Ms. Yolanda Pedronas, Ms. Christine Biletto, Ms. Leslie Leon Guerrero. If you're here to give verbal testimony, you can come to the table, and if you're submitting oral testimony, you may do so with the staff. Okay. All right. You can come up, Chris.
I'll be the last.
Yes, you'll be the last. Okay, so we'll take it in the order that you all signed in. So we'll begin with Student Regent Laximana.
Buenas en hafa de everybody. Secretary Amanda Shelton, Senator Canata, and Senator Telo Taidegui, and everyone here present in the room. I would like to keep my testimony short and simple by saying we are very supportive and we are very excited that the RNC has chosen Chris Duennias to represent as a new member of the Board, and we look forward to having you on our team and that we are very excited and we are very, we are very in support of this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Regent Leslie Leon Guerrero.
Good afternoon, Senator Shelton, Senator Taidegui, and Senator Canata. I come before you today on behalf of the Board of Regents as their Vice President and also as the former Chairman of the Regent Nominating Council. So I'm very familiar with the qualifications that are needed to fill this seat. We are very confident in Chris's appointment and welcome his expertise and background in fiscal management, budgeting, strategic planning, and particularly being able to fill a gap that we have not been able to fill on the Board since the departure of Regent Phyllis. You guys know very well some of the fiscal restraints and challenges we've had at the university, so having someone of Chris's caliber sitting on the Board and being able to represent us and hear that voice is going to be extremely instrumental as we push forward with some of our capital improvement projects. You know, we've been breaking ground on some of those things, so being able to manage those projects, making sure that we stay within our means and live within our means and do what we can to build a beautiful campus, a state-of-the-art campus for our students and for our future leaders is very important to us. So we welcome Chris's appointment and we hope you support that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leon Guerrero. Yolanda Pedronas, please.
Hafa de, Madam Chairperson, and Senator Canata, Senator Taidegui. My name is Yolanda Pedronas. I'm the Director of Human Resources for Triple J Enterprises. I'm here to present my testimony and the testimony of Jeff Jones, the President of Triple J Enterprises. So I come here to unreservedly recommend Christopher Duennias to serve on the Board of Regents of the University of Guam. As the Chief Financial Officer at Triple J, he has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership, strategic acumen, and deep commitment to driving progress and excellence. In his role as CFO, he has exemplified remarkable financial stewardship navigating complex fiscal landscapes with precision and foresight. He's been instrumental in steering our organization through challenging economic climates. His keen insights and analytical skills have consistently contributed to the success and sustainability of our organization. Beyond his financial expertise, Chris embodies the qualities essential for effective governance and leadership. He is collaborative and an inclusive decision-maker, valuing diverse perspectives and fostering an environment conducive to constructive dialogue as well as consensus building. As an alumnus of the University of Guam, Chris possesses a genuine passion for the success of UOG and a firm belief in the transformative power of higher learning. His vision for educational advancement aligns seamlessly with the mission and values of the University of Guam. I'm confident that he will bring invaluable insights and a strong commitment to the Board. Having worked closely with Chris for over six years, I have firsthand experience of his abilities and unwavering dedication to excellence. His genuine willingness to bolster our community is truly admirable. I'm confident in Chris's capability to offer substantial contributions and further elevate the ongoing success of the University of Guam. I wholeheartedly endorse his appointment to the University of Guam Board of Regents. Sincerely, Yolanda.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pedronas, for your testimony. I'd also like to recognize my colleague Senator Brown for joining us. Thank you very much. Ms. Christine Biletto.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and members of the committee. My name is Christine Biletto. I am the Chief Financial Officer of Dokomo Pacific as well as the owner and operator of the fruits franchise on Guam. I'm here today to support the nomination and the appointment of Christopher Duennias to the Board of Regents to the University of Guam. I've also submitted written testimony already as required by the committee to the Chairwoman's office. I've actually not come here today to talk about his education, his experience, or his capabilities. I believe that his resume that he submitted along with his application thoroughly details that he's more than qualified to serve on the Board, and he has the necessary prerequisites to serve well, not just to the Board but to the university community as well as the community as a whole. I wanted to highlight instead his character and his mannerisms that go beyond that. Chris is not just known for his intelligence and capabilities but for his ability to provide advice and guidance with the utmost professionalism. When he serves on a Board or is a part of a group, he listens to his colleagues' opinion. He appreciates their perspective, and then he provides his opinion in a way that does not alienate others. This is an important quality on any Board. Maintaining the ability to work with others towards a common goal is more effective and provides for a better outcome than one that is plagued with conflict and the inability to reach a consensus because of this conflict. His spirit of collaboration and working towards a common goal has earned him the highest respect among his colleagues both in the private and nonprofit sector. This was apparent in 2020 when the Guam Chamber of Commerce dealt with the unprecedented COVID pandemic that plagued our island. Throughout the crisis, Chris remained level-handed. He contributed tremendously to the Chamber's plight at ensuring that the business community's concerns was represented in the decisions that were being made. Chris embodies the best characteristics of a good leader. This is why he is often tapped on to serve in leadership roles. He was elected as the President of the Rotary Club and served both as Treasurer and Vice-Chairman for the Guam Chamber of Commerce. It is for this reason that I wholeheartedly endorse his nomination and respectfully request the committee's confirmation of his appointment. I firmly believe that he will contribute positively to the Board of Regents with its extensive knowledge, experience, professionalism, and leadership qualities. Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi. And the Chairwoman of the Board of Regents, Mrs. Sandra McKeever.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Senators. Thank you very much for having me. I have a written testimony which I'll be turning in, and it's really hard being last because everyone said everything I wanted to say about Chris, but this is what I do want to add. I wholeheartedly support his nomination and him being in the region. I think we're very lucky to have him on the Board. Chris and I have served on the Chamber Board together along with Chris, Christine, the other Chris, and I would have to say exactly what Chris was explaining of his professionalism, his mannerism. He has the ability to just take in information and really think things through, and sometimes I'm like, man, I wish I had that poise. I like to talk a lot, but Chris soaks it all up, and you can see him thinking and analyzing, and we need that on the Board. And as a member of the Finance Committee at the University of Guam, we really need those expertise, and I just am so excited for Chris to be there, and just everything that everyone has said regarding Chris is so true, and I'm just excited for him to be there, and I just want to express to you, I've had dealings on the Board also just in business, and he is very consistent with just his ability to be professional and to analyze information, and so we're going to have a great Regent on the Board, so I'm excited about that. So I just want to express how I will wholeheartedly support him as a University of Guam Board of Region. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And to the appointee, you may begin, Mr. Duennias.
Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Shelton, Senator Canata, Senator Brown, Senator Taidegui. My name is Chris Duennias. I'm currently employed as the CFO at Triple J. Before Triple J, I worked in the financial services industry for eight years and the Office of the Public Auditor for two years under Doris Flores-Brooks. I serve as a Director for the Chamber and a past President of my Rotary Club, and yes, I'm a proud graduate of UOG. I majored in Finance Economics and I finished in 2000. I could perhaps go into more detail about why or how my education, experience, and volunteer service with nonprofit organizations support my candidacy to sit on the Board, but I think I'll just defer to the testimony that's been given so far. What I prefer to share with you is how an unremarkable kid grew up in the village of Chalampago, graduated from GW, lacked the means to attend an off-island college, and so matriculated at the University of Guam. And with the dreams of a prosperous future, the generosity of Guam's taxpayers, and the commitment of professors who understood the significance of their council, another UOG graduate was empowered to become a productive member of society. So through mentorships, experience, his career developed, and he managed to forge a professional identity. And today, understanding how consequential the UOG education was for his career, he wonders what he can do to ensure that more students have access to the same opportunities he's been given so that they too can be enlightened, so they can discover, and so they can serve. Senators, this is my story, and I'm sure several of you share a similar, if not identical, narrative. I'm honored to be appointed to serve on the Board of Regents of UOG, and if I'm confirmed, I look forward to lending my experience and private sector perspective in banking and financial management, representing the interests of the institution's stakeholders. My volunteer work with civic organizations has ingrained in me a strong sense of civic engagement. I hope to bring useful insights to the Board, ensuring that decisions advance the concerns of both the university and the broader community. So in summary, my motivation is rooted in a blend of personal connection, professional expertise, and a desire to serve the island and region that has shaped me. So with your confirmation, I hope to bring even more unremarkable kids into these chairs, yours and mine, and in these chambers, having a very similar exchange because of the transformative effects of a UOG education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duennias. We'll begin with questions, comments from the panel. Senator Taidegui.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues, and most especially those who are here to testify on behalf of Chris, and of course, the nominee himself, Chris Duennias. I've known you in the capacity of the social events, and you've been so well-respected by many good friends of mine. Though I don't know you personally, I do know that you have been in capacity of finance. You know, DFS, were you at DFS at one time? Yes, okay, because I didn't see that on your application for DFS. That's how I know you from. I also noticed that in your application, Chris, that you went, attended university or you went, attended Alabama, right?
Yes, Senator Troy University.
Okay, but yet you were employed here on Guam at Community First from 2003 to 2007, but yet on your application, it was at college for 2006 to 2008. Was this all online or?
At the time, Troy was bringing professors out, and so we were organized in cohorts, and they would fly their professors out.
So that's how it happened? Okay, so you attended Troy College on Guam through their thing?
Correct.
Okay, that's how you did it, you know? I like to look at these things, you know, to make sure that everything's in order and look at your, most especially your experience. I mean, it's good to have background, but you know, experience is very important, and sometimes you can't teach that, you know? But I do feel that your added plus for me is that you graduated from GW right on. Okay, biba. Second one is I appreciate the fact that, you know, you stayed on Guam. You stayed here. Your talents, your knowledge stays at home. I greatly appreciate that, and I'm hoping at the University of Guam that you find ways there that would also extend that same type of options for people, not only just to go to the University of Guam, but the incentive to go to the University of Guam, which also entails them to stay for a certain amount of time. I remember in the past, they had these programs where if you go to UOG and it's paid for by taxpayers' money or by the University of Guam, that they have to give back by staying for three years to work it off. So that really needs to be put in place and marketed. We're finding out a lot of our people are exiting Guam, you know, for better horizons. All we're here to do is just to train them, educate them, and then they leave. So this is a huge problem. It also means that the University of Guam is growing, you know, as far as buildings and capacity. However, we are having a population decrease from, you know, before COVID, we had, what, 175,000 people? Now we're down to 155. So we have to be cautious on when you're, whatever you're doing at the University of Guam, and we have to look at overbuilding, but we don't have the students to put them in. We need to look at more remote, you know, education where especially mothers who want to go to the University of Guam, but you know, they don't have a babysitter, so they need to stay home and they can learn all this, just like what happened to you with the Troy College in Alabama. You were able to find a way to still avail yourself of an education but being home. So that's real important. So those are my concerns. Growing the university too fast when our population is decreasing. Of course, we can always look outside to the Micronesian Islands, you know, that come to Guam and utilize, but then we also need facilities to do that as well. Currently, this is your first term on a Board? On the University of?
Yes.
Okay, so your first time, and it is for six years?
Yes.
You're committed?
I'm committed, Senator.
Okay, I'm the type that always asks someone who's gone for a second term, how many times have they missed? So I hope you don't miss any Board meetings. It's very important, especially Guam Regent, because they do lack quorum sometimes, so it's important to be there. Nonprofit organizations, I know you're very busy. I looked at your resume that you have other things at Chamber, Rotary Guam, you know, so, and plus your personal life. So I hope you don't overextend yourself because University of Guam is one area that very important when you sit on this Board. It's very, very important, and you should be honored to be even asked to sit on that Board. I also ask that you read the Guam laws that govern Boards and Commissions on this island. We recently had a situation where a Commission was allowing their members to travel business first. That is illegal, okay? So, and they're all like playing like, oh, I didn't know that. Well, that's not an excuse for me. If you're sitting on a Board such as the one that they were sitting on, you really shouldn't sit on a Board if you can't read the law that governs it. So I recommend that you, I highly recommend that you look at the laws that cover Boards and Directors, what you can and cannot do. Of course, the bylaws of the Board of Regents is important, and read the minutes of the last, at least the last three or four minutes that they had. I don't mean to sound like I'm scolding you or anything like that, but you know, I just get really upset when I see people come and sit on Boards and they don't take the time to. It's not glamorous, I can tell you that. It's a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work, takes time away from your family, your friends, but there's no one more appreciative than someone like me who appreciates your time, the background that you have, to sit on this Board. I wish you the best of luck and know that my door is always open at any time that you need assistance or anything that I can help you with, or you have a problem at UOG and you're trying to figure out how we can do this through legislation. Please feel free to knock on my door anytime. It's always open. Good luck to you, Chris, and thank you for serving the people of Guam.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. I appreciate it. And as far as commitment, I'm, you know, I'm well aware. If you know anyone in the Chamber Board or the Rotary Club, I'm pretty sure I had perfect attendance during Chris's two terms, and I rarely miss a meeting for our Rotary Club, so I understand the responsibility of the engagement.
Thank you very much. Senator Brown?
Thought I'd get to sit at the back of the class. Good afternoon to you, Mr. Duennias. I don't know you personally, but certainly you have a very impressive resume and the testimony that's been provided this afternoon. I don't need to go over that. I think that's been outlined very nicely for us. Myself, I'm also a graduate of the university. I've had the opportunity to teach there. I've had the opportunity to work administratively. So you know, a lot of my success, I look back at, and by choice. I didn't, it wasn't financial. I chose to go to UOG. I had a merit scholarship, fortunately, so the people of Guam paid for my undergraduate degree. And I echo the concern Senator Telo raised. It's concerning me because I see that exodus of our talented people, and for me, it was never a question of not coming back. I got my graduate degree with the University of Hawaii, and I never doubted I would come home. It was always in me that I would come home. And I am concerned about the growing exodus of talent on Guam because we have a lot of people, they go, oh, even in the medical field. We attended a gathering not too long ago with doctors on Guam saying we need to do more in education so that we can get more of our people to get in the medical field. And I have relatives that are in the medical field, they're just not here. They're not doctors and pharmacists here on Guam, they're elsewhere. I can appreciate the drive and the glamour of the United States of America, but it's not home. So I certainly echo the concerns because we are seeing that, and we see the taxpayers of Guam investing a lot of time and money and resources with the hope that they're investing in the future of the island, and when the future of the island's constantly getting on a plane and leaving, what investment do they have? And what future do we have for Guam? And then I also think the viability down the road of the university because it has grown substantially, not just in physical infrastructure but in cost. I understand every government agency inherently is going to have increased costs as time goes on, but also the change because we're also dealing with a younger generation, not everybody, you know, everything's instantaneous, the desire, you know, everything has, anything is second. I mean, those dot matrix printers we used to deal with are just unimaginable. That amount of time would be just too long for us now because we want everything at the tip of our fingers. And even for opportunities to grow in their career, a lot of people are not necessarily looking at a four-year degree. They can get other training programs now and get into career fields that may even make them financially more successful than getting a four-year college education. And we know, having gone through it, it's an arduous process, no matter how smart you are. It's a time you have to take and invest and follow through to get your degree and work towards that accomplishment. And because of that change, we're seeing nationwide, there's some colleges and universities that are having to substantially reduce their programs or some that are looking at ultimately closing because they simply cannot sustain, you know, the enrollment and the cost of running their institution. Many of them get top-heavy over time, you know? We have, I'm sure from the time I attended UOG, which was over 30-something years ago, you know, we've added on a lot of administrative capacity positions to the university that didn't exist, and certainly had very little to do with the actual teaching that happens in the classroom. What do you look at in your envisioning, especially in your area of finance? Because you know, we know the university's always focused on autonomy, but you know, I look at it this way, until you pay your own paycheck and make your own money, you're never going to be free, right? You know, your parents tell you, hey, when you're on your own, you can make your decisions, and understandable, freedom is not free. But what do you look at for the future with the challenges that the university is facing? It has many milestones and many accomplishments, but just the shift that's happening? And if the enrollment goes down, how do you look at, how do you look at the future of the university sustaining itself, just with the changes that are happening in the world around us? And again, a younger generation that in some cases doesn't feel the same sense of dedication because dedication requires a lot of sacrifice and follow-through, and a lot of people just don't value that anymore.
Yeah, so Senator, I do agree. I was looking at the information about the university. I saw the enrollment before the pandemic was around 4,000, and it's kind of dropped to around 3,000. So the pattern of the brain drain and the exodus of people, it's there in the university enrollment numbers as well. You know, I still see UOG as just this beacon of education, not just in Guam but in the region, so we're talking about the CNMI and the FSM and the RMI. So I think if the university continues to brand itself as that place that the, I think at one point we were referred to as the natural choice, and I think it is still the natural choice for us to entice our children to see on Guam. I have a son who's 23 years old, and he had options, but you know, I knew, I went to UOG and I knew that the education that I got there helped me along the way, and I could see that it could help him in a very similar way. I think it's going to be about, you know, selling more of those kinds of stories and engaging, as you said, the younger people. I agree, the average person's engagement is probably 10 seconds or whatever the length is of a TikTok video. And you know, we, that's just the world we live in, and I think we, as the university, as legislators, we have to kind of recognize these trends and patterns and kind of use those things to our advantage, help ourselves, market ourselves to the people who are leaving. Having said that, you know, but there's also, I'm sure everyone has a different reason, but I think a lot of times it's an economic reason that people are leaving, and if the opportunity, if they don't feel the opportunity, if they don't see the opportunity, then I think that's a cycle that can perpetuate if we don't address it, and I think it does start with an educated workforce. You pointed out that the fact that UOG has four-year degrees, but we also have like the opportunity to go into maybe more certificate offerings, just other ways to educate people so that a four-year degree is not the one-stop and the only choice for people. So it's going to be a combination of those kinds of things. I don't know, I don't know what the silver bullet would be. I don't know, I don't know what the silver bullet would be. Someone once told me that, you know, for every problem, there's a solution that's clear, simple and wrong. And I think it would be probably premature for me to say that I have the, all the answers. But I think, you know, hopefully over six years, we can start to work, you know, collaborate with the rest of the board and continue to sell UOG as that beacon of education in the region.
Well, I certainly hope that you do that. I mean, I understand you haven't yet served, but I hope in the course of that time, because obviously you're going to get confirmed. I mean, with a resume like this and testimony like this, how could you not? But I think you need to keep that to the back of your mind because everyone looks, you know, today and how we're going to benefit now. But you know, when the revenues drop, and they are going to, I mean, there's no inevitable continued growth for Guam and it's not going to level off. It will level off. And we have grown this government in the last three years I've been back by substantial amount. I would have to add up, I should ask Senator Tello because she loves her numbers, to add it up, how much we've increased the annual cost of the budget, but it's over $100 million. Money like that does not grow on coconut trees. Coconut trees don't generate, you know, if we got in the copper industry, it's not going to generate that kind of money. And I fear that, you know, because we as politicians, not myself personally, I don't sell this idea, maybe that's why I'm not the most popular one. But we sell this idea that we inevitably are going to be able to continue funding and we continue to just increase revenues, whether or not the money's going to be there. And it does concern me because I see cracks already in the government where critical services are not being paid for, not being covered. And we create this illusion that, oh, you know, we'll fund it and all will be well, or that money's the ultimate solution. And I'm just concerned because of the growth rate and expansion is beautiful. I look at the campus now, I was there not too long ago for the new, we're rebuilding new nursing facility and certainly recently you had the groundbreaking for the new engineering building. I think that's all wonderful, but I also want to know how we're going to pay for it, how we're going to maintain it. And how are, how are the people of Guam ultimately going to benefit from their investment? Because it does come out of their resources and their pockets. And I just don't see sometimes the same level of appreciation, you know, our younger people. I'm sure our parents may have said that about us at some point, but they just don't realize the heavy lifting that's been involved in the sacrifice, downright sacrifice over the years that's been involved and the opportunities all of us have had that our parents, grandparents have given us. They just don't seem to appreciate, at least that's what I sense, that's what I see. And I just, that sense of pride that, you know, to be here on Guam and invest your talents here to me is unique. I could be anywhere. Many of us could be anywhere else doing what we're doing. And yet to come back and invest in your own home and have the opportunity to raise your family here to me is more impressive. I've appreciated that opportunity. So I wish you well. I'm sure there'll be challenges you'll have to deal with, but certainly your background in finance will be, will be a tremendous benefit to the university and sure that they're being fiscally responsible. Because at the end of the day, what the bottom line is and what the dollar is and making sure you can pay for your obligations and not going beyond that, not spending beyond your budget, you know, is very, very important. So I wish you well. Pleasure to meet you. Hopefully you have the opportunity to do it again. But thank you and thank you to all of you that come and testified for Mr. Duennius.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Canata?
I'm very easy. I have no questions for you. I think your resume speaks for you and it speaks volumes of your character. Certainly all these women behind you and standing right beside you are great for your new post. So I have no questions for you and I wish you all the best. If my office needs to assist you with anything, let me know. You have my full support.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. And I do want to state for the record, Regent Mike Nahalua is here to support you too. So you have one gentleman here among these ladies here to support you. All right. Well, thank you very much for all of your testimony today. We've heard about your education, your work experience, your character, and I find that you are very fitting to serve on this Board of Regents. As you heard Regent Leon Guerrero talk about all the projects that are ongoing and upcoming for the University of Guam, there are big shoes to fill on this, on this board. And we look forward to your commitment and to your service in this position. So you're, as all of your friends here have said, you're a critical thinker, you're analytical, a good listener, collaborative, all qualities that we need you to exercise on this board. And so we wish you all the best and I look forward to moving your nomination in the coming session and seeing you serve very soon. So good luck to you, Mr. Duennius, and happy holidays to all of you. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Signed up to testify before speaking. Individuals shall first be recognized and then state their name for the record. The Department of Parks and Recreation serves our island residents and visitors by managing public parks and beaches, public recreational facilities, and community programs, and through the protection and preservation of historical and cultural resources. DPR manages and maintains approximately fifty-three public parks and beach property, manages Guam's only public cemetery, and is responsible for the protection of all historic areas, buildings, and sites significant to Guam's history. The Parks and Recreation Commission was established for the purpose of recommending to the governor the appointment or removal of the director and advising the director. Together with management, the commission strengthens the community through programs, services, and facilities that enhance personal development, promote healthy lifestyles, encourage community involvement, and engage in a comprehensive historic preservation program. At this time, I'd like to recognize those who have signed up for today's hearing. We have Dr. Michael Robago, Mihai Robago, Manami Robago, Ethan Gumatautau, Angel Sablon, Christine Baletto, and Joe Sanchez. So we have those who are here to give testimony, and we'll end with the appointees. So we'll begin with Mr. Angel Sablon, the Acting Director of Department of Parks and Recreation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Shelton, Speaker Trelahi, Senator Brown, and my friend over there, Senator Taitagui. What happened to the gentleman? So it's an old woman's hearing now. I'm Angel Sablon, the Acting Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. And I come here simply to support the -- oh, there he is. Support the appointment and confirmation of Mike Robago. To be very frank and honest, this is the first time I've met Frank -- Mike, I'm sorry. I knew that he was appointed, reappointed to the commission. And one of his concerns as related to me by the Deputy Director is that he did not want to serve in a commission really that has not acted in so long. And simply, they have not acted in so long because if they have not had a full complement of members to the commission to be able to obtain a quorum. Hopefully, with the confirmation of Mike, that will all change. Because the Parks and Recreation Commission does have a very important work to do. Not just, in this case, confirming me as the Director of Parks and Recreation, but we have, since I've gotten on board now almost two weeks, many things that I've learned about Parks and Recreation, its mission, and the things that need to be done. We have the swimming pools that need to be up and running. We have our park facilities that have been damaged by typhoon Mawar that need to be repaired and re-enhanced. We have our parks that are, if you drive around, you'll see many of them that are actually look very neglected. In fact, I've met with the United Chinese Association just this morning to be able to see what we can do with the Chinese garden that's up in Upper Tumon. They have committed that, and we have committed as well, that we're going to get that park up and running, beautify it, bring it back to what it looked like before. And the United Chinese Association have committed to me that they are more than willing to do this, and in fact, they don't want to give up the park. They want us to go ahead and continue it. But all these things that are happening, I really need to have the Parks and Recreation Commission be there to be able to support me and the staff, the hard-working staff at DPR in carrying out our mission. We are looking at grants to apply for, to be able to get our parks. There's many grants. I talked to the National Historic Park this morning, and there's different ways to obtain grants, federal grants, to upgrade our parks. We're upgrading our recreational facilities as we speak. Because if you do not know now, the Lotte Giants will be coming to Guam in February to start their spring training. And this is one of the things we're looking at, along with the Guam Visitors Bureau, is to start this sports tourism again and bring in off-island or international teams to come and use Guam for their spring training. We have facilities that are capable of handling training for these international teams. We just need to upgrade them and then maintain them. And so that's why I have this, all of this on my plate. I want to be able to present it to the commission and work with them to move things forward. So I'm very, very happy that Mike is here. Mike has accepted the renomination to serve on the commission. And getting him on board would be simply a way for us to start moving forward with all the things that we need to do at the Department of Parks and Recreation. So with that, I humbly ask you to fully support his nomination to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Sisus Masi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sablon. Ms. Baletto.
Hafadee, Senators, my name is Christine Baletto. I actually have not prepared a written or oral testimony. I showed up for the earlier hearing and found out that my baby cousin was being nominated for this commission, and I wholeheartedly support him. He did not reach out to us as a family and ask us to come here. And it just kind of speaks to his being humble, along with his intelligence. As far as back as I can remember, Mike has always been active in sports, in village activities, in promoting community development through sports. He has brought resources to, most especially, our schools in the south, often being a coach, sometimes not paid or ever compensated. But he's always vested himself in the young people and in our community in promoting, you know, these activities that develop them not just as in their academics, but also, you know, on their physical and social welfare. And so I think I can't, or I can't think of anyone better to serve on this commission. He would be an invaluable addition and assistance to Angel. And so I humbly request the committee's approval of his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baletto. Mr. Sanchez.
Hello, Hafadee, and good afternoon, Senators. My name is Joe Sanchez, and I am a resident of Agania Heights. Thank you for this opportunity to provide my testimony in support of the appointment of Dr. Mike Robago as a member of the Department of Parks and Recreation Commission. I've had the honor and pleasure of knowing Dr. Robago for over twenty years as a fellow coach, educational colleague, former player on the national team, and a longtime trusted friend. He is an experienced educator, serving our community as a health and physical education teacher and athletic director for over twenty years in the GDOE. He is well-educated with a bachelor's degree in health, physical education, and dance, a master's degree in instructional technology, and a doctor of education in teaching and learning. As an accomplished high school and international athlete, he has played on several high school teams and was a member for many years on the men's national volleyball team, representing Guam at numerous international competitions. In addition to his educational career and in further service to our island's youth, he is also a longtime high school and middle school volleyball coach, as Christine mentioned, for boys' and girls' volleyball, and a national team coach for both men's and women's national teams. He is Guam's first and only Level III internationally certified volleyball coach, the highest level you can achieve in the sport, and trainer of coaches by the Federation of International Volleyball, the governing body for the sport throughout the world. With this designation, he has not only worked towards the development of the athletes themselves, but also building the capacity of our island's coaches. His accomplishments as an educator, athlete, and coach are matched only by his dedication to the growth and development of Guam's youth and his desire to give back and serve the community through sports leadership and recreation. Our island, its youth, and fellow sports colleagues and leaders are fortunate to have someone of his caliber so dedicated to their development, well-being, and growth. He will be an asset to any board or commission or organization he is a part of. I humbly ask for your consideration and support of his appointment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Robago.
Hafadee, Madam Chair, Speaker, Senators, my name is Mike Robago. First off, thank you to those that came and speak on my behalf. And this time, I think last time I came, I came by myself, right, Speaker? I had nobody, I had no testimonies. I just wanted to nip this in the bud and get started. But this time, I brought my support staff in the back. I think you already announced their names, plus my brother as well, and my daughter's boyfriend, both off-island from college. And what a day, ready to spend their, one of their free days, coming to watch me come up here and present myself to the board. And, you know, I think, I think the past two days, they keep asking me, "Where are you going? What are you doing again?" And Mr. Sanchez kind of gave a full-on introduction of what I've been doing the past twenty-five years. I'm still current active with the military. I'm working on my last four years on active-duty status with a training schoolhouse up in Northwest Field. I'm still coaching boys in boys' high school and girls' high school over in Notre Dame, and I'm still currently managing the Guam Women's National Volleyball Team. So to answer, what am I doing to my family? I'm just adding one more dish to the plate. And I think being part of this board is really important for me, all because of the community and of all the events that this island can produce. And I feel that we need to get things on the ball. This is, like I was telling the new director, I believe this is the fourth director that has been since I've been on this board, but I have only met one director since then, or the first two directors. Other than that, I have, I'm ready to go, whatever we need to get done. I was just speaking to him earlier, and I believe he says we need two more, two more board members to get this going. So thank you for having me here today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robago. Yes, that's correct. We had the confirmation of Mr. Kyle Mandapat as a member of the board last year, Mr. Justin Guerra, and Mr. Robert Steffi, who's the chairman. And so we are awaiting more appointments from Adalube to complete the board. So I assume in this last term, since we were also waiting for those appointments, you have yet to meet with this board, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, just to clarify. And we'll begin with questions from the Speaker. Speaker Trelahi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, Mr. Robago, and to your family. Thank you for being here and support, and of course, to those who have presented testimonies, Sisus Masi, for giving us your perspective. Mr. Robago, can you just confirm, it's not in your packet, but you are current, you were on the board already?
Yes, ma'am.
And so this is a reappointment?
It's a reappointment.
For four more years? Did you serve for four years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is a reappointment for four more years. And so that's good, then, you can speak from experience. So during your term, were there any meetings?
As I was mentioning to the director, we only had two meetings, and that's one with Director Ibanez, and then the second one was with Director, right after Mr. Ibanez, which was Chief Alcontra, Mr. Rokiacontra.
Okay, yes, and you're correct. So you mentioned four in the four years that you served on the board. There were four different directors. I, too, wanted to confirm today. We have an acting director, that was announced in the media, so Mr. Angel Sablon, currently acting director, and is there a deputy director? Maybe Mr. Sablon, you can answer that.
Yes, ma'am, Speaker Warren Pelletier, who was the acting director prior to me, is now the deputy director.
Okay. And so one of the duties of the board is to recommend to the governor the director. In your term, did you, as a board member, ever participate in that?
During my term, I think one of the challenges was to have a formal quorum, but it appeared that location, COVID, just other, I guess, the board wasn't able to meet, and I think it was more difficult and a bit challenging just to get everybody. So we did have a group chat going and calling the board members, it was like, let's go. And the board was all fresh, it was all new members to the board, and I think it was, like myself, first-time board member. And that's when Mr. Bob Steffi was asked to step in and become the commissioner. So since then, I've, you know, we're, again, brand-new to this, and all we can do is just question, send emails, ask, you know, and I believe they asked me to fill out a timesheet or state something when we met, and I replied back, you know, we've only met twice. So, you know, I don't think I should fill this out, if anything.
All right, so did you ever participate in the nomination or recommendation to the governor of a director?
No, ma'am.
All right, yeah, that's one of the duties. Are you able, you think, if you can get a quorum, to, you feel confident, to make a recommendation that is independent?
If it comes down to that, yes, I am. But to be honest, you know, when I first stepped into this position, I was more of a, let's get things happening, what can we do? So, for example, right, like the parks weren't being cleaned, so one of my, one of my things with former director, Director Alcontra, was I set him up with the First Sergeants of the Air Force, because, you know, I was hearing like they're struggling on manning and getting the parks clean. So, you know, all the Air Force active-duty members, they're always looking for projects to do with community involvement. So I linked him up with the First Sergeants, and I think he was able to get two groups to come down and participate in cutting the grass and taking care of the park. You know, I'm more of a, can I do it? I'll go do it, but to lead a group, you know, I'm already, my plate is full, but I'm always have that extra time to push. But if I have to, I will.
Okay, well, you have to, according to the law, recommend to the governor a director, your commission. It's supposed to recommend a director to the governor. This is one of those, it's a very unique one, because normally, the governor will appoint a director, and it will be confirmed by the legislature, that's how we all concur. But according to our statutes right now, this, there's no concurrence by the legislature and the director. It's all on you as a commissioner to make a recommendation to the governor, and the governor either accepts that or not. But without our confirmation, it's not really us directly holding a director accountable. It would be you as a commissioner. So just wanted to remind you about that.
The duties.
And that that is, to me, one of the hardest things, is to act once you're appointed. Of course, we're all appointed by, you know, the governor, it's, you know, a relationship, perhaps, or a trust relationship, which is good. But then, once you're put into that position, it's between you and the people of Guam. That's what we're here for, right? To say, you're now answering to the people of Guam, you are, right? So we need a Parks and Rec to be responsive to the people of Guam as well. We need the commissioners to urge our directors. And it's not really an approving board, it's really a making recommendations board. So I just think it's harder that way, right?
And I'll be honest again, straight up, the last time that it was officially met, it was Senator Marsh Titan, who kind of guided this new board. So she was the one that was dictating all the meetings, and we all met in front of her, which kind of was helping the board out. But again, after her not regaining her seat back, that's when we were kind of stuck with, who do we fall under and all that? I believe that was our responsibility to go and ask those questions, but I'm aware now.
Okay. And I am just concerned because of the rotating of so many different directors, and I think they've all come in with different strengths, but also, you know, they change things, right? And so we have to try to answer to the people, want to know what happened here, you know, what's going on there, and I'm sure you have the same challenge. If you're not able to have meetings and regular reports from the directors. So we have a new director, hopefully, this is all going to work out now that we're going to get quorum. What is the quorum, Mr. Director? Four? So you will make quorum. If the three are still active, you will, if you are confirmed, become the four that's needed for a quorum, and the others will be additional.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just going to reiterate some of the concerns that I have. And I want to, for everyone watching who doesn't remember from the last confirmation that you had, Mr. Robago's a teacher for many years, he's also a coach, he's been, as they testified, very instrumental in sports on Guam, not just in the schools, but also island-wide, right? And you're managing, like you said, the national teams, different skill sets. You're also an active member of one of the Guards, right?
Seven Thirty-Six Security Forces, yes.
Okay, thank you. And as you just said, you brought that experience to help us with our parks, which is above and beyond, really. But, so thank you for all of that. But I'm sure you share our concerns that there are still many issues with the parks, with the duties of Parks and Rec that are just problematic. One that I was completely made fun of was, when I tried to bring it up during the budget, is the showers at the parks. We have very few beaches on Guam that the people of Guam can use, very few. And the ones that are public and open, and we can even park at, maybe four. And if those don't have showers for our people who live in the villages to use, or our tourists to use, it's, or broken showers, or broken rest, it's just kalakas, and it's unacceptable in any standard. Even in third-world country standards, I don't think that is acceptable. So we have resources, and it's amazing to me, like the director rightly is going to focus on bringing back sports tourism. Well, we have sports tourism going on right now. We have paddling teams coming in from off-island, they have continued to do that. We have other sports teams continuing to come in, yet we cannot seem to make a working shower for these people. But when we Guam athletes go to these other places, we are treated very well. They would never give us one shower for an entire beach full of tourists, recreational and athletes. They would never do that. Why are we doing that? It makes no sense to me. We've even put special money for showers, and they asked, "Oh, is the speaker trying to put a gold-plated shower at Mataping Beach?" No! But can we get a shower at Mataping Beach? We have one shower. And if you watch the lines of people, it's sick. I'm just having a bad day. But there are long lines of kids, like, standing in the mud, waiting a long time to get washed up by their parents, and it's gross. It's mud, it's the runoff from other people showering that they have to wait in in order to get next into the shower. That's where the one shower works, and in the other parks where the showers don't work, it's worse. So I don't know, you know, what other fancy things we want to accomplish, but I'm just saying, if we can't accomplish these basic things, then I just feel that we fail as a government, and it cannot, it's not a money issue. So if these directors tell you that it is, I'm asking you, as the commissioner, board member, to not accept that. I don't believe that. It's a priority issue, it's an attention issue, it's a solution-oriented issue, and we need to get to those solutions now, please. And I just can't, I can't imagine, we're spending millions of dollars advertising ourselves in tourism, yet when we bring in, we had paddling competitors from, I saw Taiwan, Korea, Japan, Palau, and if they go back and they talk about Guam's facilities, I can't imagine what they say, because I've heard the athletes, how they talk about the other facilities and the places they've been to. So I can't imagine, I mean, that's not acceptable.
Nor would they come back to, right? Yes, I understand, I share the same sentiments as you. I've participated in every possible micro-games, specific games, and I've seen parks and recs throughout the whole South Pacific. And if Guam being part of the US territory, and we cannot level up to them, then that is why I'm sitting here to question these, on why can't we just have a few more showers? I understand.
Thank you. And our economy, in many circum, it's better than some of these places. So that's why I say money cannot be the excuse. And we've particularly given money to just fix the showers at Mataping Beach, very, very specific, not done. So I don't understand that either. I'm also concerned because, you know, of course, you talked about the swimming pools, but we have other facilities, but I just want to know, hopefully, you guys can get quorum, get a meeting, get, you know, reports. I want to know the plan. We've sat through, me and senators sat through several plans from Parks and Rec, different directors, they come up with different plans. Some of them had grant funding to repair all these facilities, like bathrooms, and I think they did it. Then they were broken again, right? But like Ipem Beach, I think has not had attention since the typhoon, and that's very concerning, because it seems to me, in my layman's view of it, that the typhoon destroyed the pavilions there that were concrete, and that they became very, like a hazard, right? So not only maybe we have disrepair, but we have hazardous things going on. And so I just, I don't know, I just think we need to see a very clear path for Parks and Rec as to where their priorities will be. Instead of jumping to whatever project somebody wants to jump onto, it should be a very clear path of how we're going to get to non-hazardous, to get to very minimal, at least, standards immediately, and then move on to, you know, the bigger projects. But I just think, I don't know, I hate to say this, after, even me, I'm frustrated and I'm embarrassed, because I've been a senator now for this many years, and we still have bathrooms that don't work at the parks. And it's very frustrating for me, you know, I can put money there, it's just, it takes all of us, it takes you as a commissioner to focus and to compel the directors to do this, it takes the directors to focus and get these things. I know you probably share all of these things, but I just want to put it on the record, because I don't know, you know, on some of these things, when we're going to get a chance again to do this. So if there is any other federal funding that we're going to pursue, I would like you to know about that as a commissioner, right? Make it your responsibility to know what federal funding we are going to pursue for this type of thing, maintenance and repair. What local funding we are going to use, and where we're going to use it, which is our priorities. And that should be the areas where we cannot get any other types of grants or other type of funding, or private funding. The other reason, I want to, the other issue is recently, so your, Parks and Rec is also head of the, or in charge of the historic resources on Guam, including historic preservation of parks, historic and cultural places. So we have a state historic preservation officer, it's a classified position, it's supposed to be acting like, you know, independent of politics. And recently, I've seen letters that, this has never happened before, where the director is telling the shippo, or the acting director is telling the shippo, they're prohibited from from stopping developers from interfering, I guess, with, well, they didn't say you can't stop them from interfering, but they say you can't require developers to do the archaeological studies anymore. They're saying you can't require developers to rebury human remains that are removed from properties because of construction. For example, the big GTA landing site that they're building up there at, across from, right, at Alupeng?
Yes.
They found human remains there, and now they're telling the shippo that the shippo cannot mandate that GTA rebury the remains that were removed and cannot mandate GTA to build a monument for those human remains, which I understand were either lati or pre-lati. I can't remember right now. But I'm very concerned about this thing, and that's why who selects the director and who can hold the directors accountable is very much of concern to me. So these are big issues. There's many more, but I just want to put those on the record for you to please help us. We need to be able to rely on you to hear this from the directors and to ask them more and to ensure, you know, what's going to be the plan for Guam. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Rabago, for your service.
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Tidagui.
Sujus Maasi, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to everyone here who's testifying, and most especially to you, Mr. Rabo, right?
Rabago, yes, ma'am.
Rabo? Speaker had a lot of good questions, and most of them were questions that I had. But the last part, I'm just going to linger a little bit on, and that is the cultural aspect of Parks and Recs, the protection and preservation of historical, cultural, and resources. As a board member, do you oversee that as well? Because if you look at the division and the chart setup of Parks and Rec, there are two entities, one with the parks and, you know, sports facilities, and then you have one area for the preservation of cultural and historical preservation. It's two different ones. Does the board, under your assumption, does the board oversee those both topic matters?
Those are very important topics, and for me, culture, this is who we are, right?
Do you oversee it?
Yes.
Okay, so you do oversee both sides?
Yes.
Okay, that was important, too. Because I did notice in your resume here, you did Manhita Cultural Group?
Yes.
Can you expand on what that group is and what you did?
Well, that was our college group back in the day at UOG. So it was pretty much all the guys that, from every village, we got together, and I think we were the ones that volunteered to build the huts. It was a perfect way to skip class and, you know, enjoy each other's culture, and that's where I met my wife, too, and showed her how to weave. That was part of it. But it was, we ended up just saying Manhita together as a big group, so we're all, we were all there for quite some time.
So are you guys still meeting up together and getting the same group?
We randomly get together, and if one of the guys, where we mostly spent most of our time at, his name is John, John Mendiola, they call him Rhino, and so he had this beach down by, uh... by Jimmy D's at the end. So it was real preserved, it was just strictly for family, and of course, he's in between the hotels, and so that's where we spent most of our college days there.
Okay, so it sounds like a group of guys just getting together. I was hoping it would be, you know, something that continued on because you definitely have the background for sports.
I mean, that's where, like I mentioned, I learned how to weave, build huts. I think, you can ask my cousin here, that I'm still the one carrying the tradition of throwing the big fiestas here and there, you know? Being this young, I can manage all the different types of local foods and everything like that. So that's where I got it from, that Manhita, the Manhita group.
Well, it's good to have a group like that, especially a network group that's into the culture and group, because it's obvious you do have the background in sports. And, you know, I love volleyball. That was my main, my main sport, really. But, you know, there's a lot that needs to be done on the cultural side at Parks and Rec. So I recommend that, you know, you got a great group and network individuals who now all grown up and seen a lot more and can actually contribute to that. And even myself, you know, I don't just do research by myself. I actually go out there to the community and speak to people and hear what they have to say and their ideas and suggestions. So I hope you continue this group and get the boys together again and include some girls. And, you know, start looking at ways that you can help preserve and protect our culture, you know? Like I said, you have the background on that, the sports side of it. I think you got that down. My concern, too, was on the appointment of director. I think the acting director right now has a wealth of knowledge. I mean, being able to run the mayor's council was, that's a feat in itself, you know? So I think you have a great support mechanism with this acting director to help you move forward on your quest and the responsibilities that are set forth by the board and commission. Are you, do you keep tabs of RFPs that are sent out? Does the boarding, the commission keep tabs of that?
No, ma'am.
Why?
That's one thing that we were struggling on is formalities of the quorum. So even just to call the meeting to attention, we had to, like, who's going to lead this? Who's going to direct this? And this is where, like I said, it was told, everybody's first time as a board member. So it was a whole learning experience, and this is the only reason why I'm retaking this, just so I can better my knowledge as well.
Yeah, only two meetings at a four-year term?
Yeah, and I didn't even gain anything from it.
Right, exactly. Well, may I recommend that you be proactive and not wait around, request from the director, the acting director, for RFPs. Acculate yourself with these RFPs, find out what's going on, take the bull by the horn, and even as an individual, so that in the event you get other board members who just sit around waiting for them to be told, you can actually, you know, take the lead on this and just be proactive.
Yes, ma'am.
So I recommend that you do ask for all this information. You're coming into a quorum of four. Be prepared. I don't see any minutes, of course, because there's nothing been going on. But there's other things that have been going out of Parks and Rec that, for instance, RFPs, like I said, that's been coming out, and issues that come to light. And you don't need to ask a director, you just go to the newspaper, you know, and you talk to your friends and family on the issues that are happening when it comes to Parks and Recs and their responsibilities. You can find a lot of issues. One of the concerns that was brought to my plate was that park that's right next to Cars Plus. You're familiar with that park?
The funeral, the cemetery?
The cemetery there? Now, that's under Parks and Rec, if I'm not mistaken. Is that true, Mr. Director, acting director?
It's under the veterans.
It's under veterans?
Yes.
So there is nothing in there that belongs to Parks and Rec that oversees that?
There's a Padre Palomo Park next to it.
Okay, there is a park there, then, right? The cemetery might belong to, you know, the veterans. But the outskirts of it and behind it, closer to the beach area, that belongs to Parks and Rec, correct?
Yes, Padre Palomo Park is under DPR jurisdiction.
And I'm finding that it's being utilized as a parking lot for a business establishment that's right next door. And if you drive by there right now, you're going to find a bunch of cars that are parked there that belonged to the employees of the business that's sitting right beside it, and that is a no-no. It's a big no-no. And Mr. Acting Director, you know, you need to look into that because that should not happen. That park is meant for people to come and enjoy the park. It's not a parking lot for a business establishment. And Mike, can you look into that, too, for me, please?
Yes, ma'am, I'll follow up on that.
Find out what's going on there.
Yes, ma'am. We will look into it, Senator. I believe the parking lot you're talking about is the one right behind the cemetery, not where Padre Palomo Park is at. That's divided by the little river that's there in between the cemetery and the park.
Well, I can tell you one thing it is not, a parking lot for a business establishment. That's what it's not. And it's being treated that way. So that needs to be addressed, you know?
We will certainly look into it and get land management to give us the coordinates of that property and make sure that it is not part of Parks and Recreation.
So I can, Mike, I can count on you, right? I can count on you to take the bull by the horn. Unfortunately, Kelly, you know, Senator Marsh was very active. When you mentioned her name, I knew you would because she was very active with Parks and Rec, and she tried to do as much as she can to provide that guidance. And you were there when she did. So you have some background to move forward and at least school your other commissioners, you know, on what her recommendation was in moving forward. Read the boards and commissions' bylaws and laws of Guam that govern boards and commissions as well. Please acculate yourself with that, so no mistakes are being made there, you know? Because an excuse for not knowing is not an excuse. You ask a judge that, and they'll tell you it's not an excuse because you don't know the law. You should know the law. And rules and regs. Also, may I ask that you update your website, you know, monthly? There are many people that go to Parks and Recs, you know, just to find out where the parks are, where they can, what they have, can and cannot do, and how much it costs if they want to, you know, barbecue the family, have a birthday party in a certain area. I know that they want to get a lot of this information on the website. And this is one website that should be updated, you know, even bi-weekly, you know, so that people can see what's there to offer to our local, you know? Many people don't have the option of have a beach to go to or a family beach that they can have their party on. So and this really needs to get out, you know, transparency. You never can go wrong, never can go wrong. So I appreciate, Mike, that you wanting to serve again. I hope this time you have a lot more to do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, and of course, my door is open, like I offer anybody sitting on the commission. My door is open. If you need any assistance, I know Senator Marsh is not here, but I'll be happy to help you where I can if you want to come and, you know, seek some assistance. I'm there for you.
Thank you.
And I want to, most especially, thank your family that's sitting here today. And I want to thank you for allowing him to serve and giving him the support he's going to need because now I think this next couple of years, he's going to be doing a lot more than he did in the last four. So I appreciate the time. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas to you and your family as well, and Happy New Year.
You, too, ma'am.
Thank you.
Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rabagia, for being here. I'll tell you, after going through all this, it makes you wonder why you'd want to continue.
Yeah, right now, after...
You can hear the frustration of my colleagues here.
That's okay.
With regards to the parks and the maintenance and all those challenges. I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to. It's kind of pleasant today to have not just yourself, but Mr. Duñez earlier up at the University of Guam that brings such considerable credentials to the table and want to reinvest it back in the community. It's appreciated because, you know, you guys, I'd like to see more people like you stepping forward and making that investment, the fact that you're family. And we know Robert Rabagia here, he used to keep things going, keep the mics going and keep the cameras rolling back in the day. So it's good to have him back this afternoon to be here to support you. I know you hear the frustration, but so much, because, you know, a lot of us grew up, we had the land to grow up in. I mean, I had my grandfather's ranch and hectares of property to play in. And a lot of young people now just don't. They're lucky they have the family home. Many live in apartments and condominiums, and even those facilities, in some cases, don't have a lot of play area. And certainly, your interest in sports and your drive there, I'm sure you want to see that expanded in the community. But somehow, there's just been this disconnect. Parks and Rec used to be a force to reckon with. It used to have, you know, quite a large number of employees that were out there maintaining the facilities. And we know over the years, it's one of those agencies that have seen a substantial decrease in its staffing capacity. And maybe through your own leadership to look, what is the best way to go about that? You know, do we have, do we contract out as GBB is doing in some cases to help maintain the parks? And then after we build the facilities, how do we maintain them? Because I know that's the challenge. We have people out there in our community, unfortunately, that are just irresponsible. You know, they see something built anew, and for some reason, there's something in them that just wants to destroy. And I don't understand that. Those are people I want sentenced for indefinite community service to, you know, put a little labor and sweat into the efforts of others that, you know, are trying to do good for our community. But I give you credit for wanting to come back, considering you've really not had much of a quorum, understandable with COVID, but we haven't had much of a quorum for your particular commission. What makes you want to come back at this point, considering you've already been around of one term and really two meetings is, most people would just, you know, wash their hands and walk away?
Well, you know, I think this was two administrations ago when I was doing a project for GNC and USOC. I presented my project to the former Lieutenant Governor Ray Tenorio, and one of my projects was to grow a volleyball league within the community. So I had to do, this project was a six-month project, and one of the things was facilities. And I come from a volleyball community, and it's hard for the volleyball community to find a home, right? So every time we wanted to throw an event or whatever, we would have to rent a facility. So I, part of the project, again, was getting clubs together to establish some type of unified age group and start training. And once all these, I had 10 clubs get together, and then once I was able to get the 10 clubs together, I was supposed to find them a facility. And then Senator, Governor Tenorio stated that there's funding there. And he said, "Well, we can have Parks and Rec's request funding and through this legislature." And I'm pretty sure they'll support the request. But after that, the whatever court that they built is going to be turned over to a specific federation that's going to run that court. And so, you know, I was kind of interested, like, yeah, but why does, why doesn't Parks and Rec just man it? You know? So I had all these questions, and I just turned that down, that recommendation from him, right? I didn't feel like another club or federation should take that over because once it's turned over, now everything's turned over, power, necessities, bathroom, everything to run a league there, and we're already struggling as is. So, you know, trying to figure out what Parks and Recs actually entails was kind of what I was interested, you know, not just from the sports side, but on the recreation side. My bachelor's is also in recreation. So I've worked at MWR, and I've seen how MWR on the base is involved with the communities. And I also grew up in the village playing sports. I used to, for basketball, I would have to play for Yamatic. For ping pong, I would have to go play for Aggett. For indoor soccer, I have to play for Aggett. San Rida was just strictly baseball, you know? So, you know, and who's in charge of that, right? Is it Parks and Recs? Because Parks runs that. So, you know, all these questions and everything like that, and I just want to be part of the board and something to give back and also just to, you know, self-enhance with my career and just being exposed to the community. And I just, I'm building network, you know? I'm building friends, and that's one thing I learned at USOC, right? Is all you need is seven friends, and each seven friends, if they get seven friends and they get seven friends, we're going to build a strong community. So, you know, I figured, sitting at Parks and Recs, I get to know people, I get to know other staff from other communities, right? And, you know, we can all kind of help each other out, right? That's part of the reason why I came back. I hate leaving without, you know, I didn't want to, why would I put a member of Parks and Recs board when I didn't even do anything or say anything? So I felt, okay, this term, you know, maybe I'll get a little bit more involved and actually start asking the questions on, why can't we meet or where can we meet? start asking the questions on, why can't we meet or where can we meet? So I'm here today just to, you know, see where this is all gonna go from now. I mean, to find out that all we need is four, then, then let's get it started if we just need four.
Well, I mean, you look, obviously, you're mission-oriented, and when you do have a goal and a mission, you stay focused on it until you get it accomplished. And GovGuam, unfortunately, for whatever reason, that's not the standard. That's the exception, unfortunately, and I hope that with your time, you're able to do that because we certainly need it. I mean, a lot of our young people now, they don't, they didn't grow up with the same degree of sports and influence. You know, nowadays, we have the computers and the phones and everything else, and we don't have as active or as healthy as a community. So certainly, anything we can do to encourage our young people to get out there and get more active is a good thing. And then the other thing, another time, another forum, we definitely, I'd like to discuss the safety of these locations. I mean, I know some of these parks also are under the mayor's jurisdictions in the different villages. When we met with Port Police a few weeks ago, they outlined which specific parks are actually under Department of Parks and Recreation. I was pleased to see that they were able to increase their staff of two to now eight or nine, nine officers that they have. I know there's a lot more support they need in terms of their, their radio equipment, their communications, their overtime. I was disappointed to hear there's not a penny for overtime. We have other government agencies that $30,000 to $40,000 a year are authorized in their budget for a single individual for overtime. So you see the inconsistency there, and yet areas where our government interfaces more directly with our community, I want to see more support. And definitely, there's a need for that because, as we mentioned, a lot of young people now don't have the land space to, to enjoy as many of us did growing up here, and we'd like to have them that they can go to, you know, be it basketball, volleyball, whatever their interest is, and be able to do it safely, especially at night. I mean, that incident at the skate park a few years ago doesn't escape me. I don't think it escaped many of our people when you think about it, that, you know, you have young people out there that want to, you know, participate and do a good thing, and they're not safe, and they're harmed, and they're brutalized. That just is not the Guam we want to see. We want to make sure that we can ensure collectively with not just the enhancing and improving the sports facilities, but making sure they're safe. And maybe that, you know, something that can be coordinated, Mr. Sablon, with your Port Police, maybe there's certain hours in the early evening, for example, that we know and have some confidence of these locations of our parks where our people like to frequent, whether for exercise or for sport activities, maybe we coordinate and we have overtime because we have money for many other things in this government. We should be able to find money in this government to support paying overtime for these officers, to actually have a physical presence so that people know they're safe, the community knows they're safe, and those bad elements out there know that, hey, I'm not gonna go messing around there because, you know, the police are there. It's unfortunate that we are at this juncture, but this is where we're at, and I think we need to do something to make, ensure that our people not only can enjoy and be safe, but more importantly, also be safe while they're out there. So I hope, because you do also have your Port Police under, under your jurisdiction as well, that those efforts can be coordinated and that information can be provided so people feel a little more safe. I mean, it's sad that we are here, but I think we just need to manage with what we are until things change, until the tide changes with how, you know, the drug problem, everything else that we see that disappoints us in our community. So I hope that's something we can work on, and I appreciate your effort. You know, I, I like seeing people that work hard and are driven. I appreciate that. I don't like people that take shortcuts, lie, and cheat to get to where they're at, or they, they do their political kissing up. I hate that. You know, I like people that have credentials, that have, have put in the time and the effort to do well in their life and do good things for their community. I really appreciate that. So I appreciate your continued effort to, to work at this, and I'm sure you'll do something better this term and encourage your other board members, and you, Mr. Sablon, being there, that you will take that initiative because they're your bosses. So I'm sure you're gonna want them to confirm your appointment because then it's not legit until they do so. So we certainly hope to hear good things coming out of your department in spite of the challenges. That's, that's where better opportunities come. So I wish you well, and thank you again to your family and everyone else here. I wish you all a Happy New Year, belated Christmas, and look forward to hearing good things out of Department of Parks and Recreation. Thank you so much.
You, too, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for the questions and the testimony from the panel, Acting Director Sablon, and to Mrs. Baletto, Mr. Sanchez. Good to hear from both your employer, your family, to see the support of your family, and everyone here who believes in, in your work. And as you've heard from all of the senators today, there are big tasks at hand at the Department of Parks and Recreation. We welcome the newest acting director. You have a lot on your plate, too, as well, sir. We've met frequently with the past directors, and we've scheduled many hearings, oversights, informational hearings that never came to fruition, so hopefully you will have that information and be ready to come before us in this new capacity that you have. And we look forward to you working together and serving as a real commission now, as the fourth member that can make quorum, along with Mr. Mandapat, Mr. Steffi, and Mr. Guerra. And we look forward, I hope, Acting Director, that you also urge the governor to send down more nominations for this commission as we've been waiting over the last year, two years now. Yes, go ahead.
I certainly will, and I can assure all of you that though this may be the first day I've, I've met Mike, it will be the first of many, many meetings they'll be having with him and the members of the Commission because we, we know the concerns, you've, you've said it here, but I'm not just gonna sit down and do nothing about it. We've already started, and when I said, when the appointment is gonna be a new DPR, it will be a new DPR.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, we were, the speaker and I were just talking, we were very excited to see a lot of improvements at EPO, that all three showers were working, and now, as we've been in this hearing, we found out only one shower is working now. So please keep that in mind. You know, we, we've gone down many times for site visits at EPO to fix the water leaks, to fix the showers, the bathrooms, and it's like every weekend, as my colleagues have said, they've been vandalized, they've been broken, and to keep on top of all of that is something very difficult, and we're thankful for the partnership at GBB. But, Mr. Sablon, you have a lot on your plate and Commissioner.
Somebody asked me, why am I going from the firing pan into the fire? And I said, well, you know, I guess the public service blood in me says that I can still do it, and I really wanted to retire and spend time with my family, but when the people of Guam, especially the leaders of Guam, ask you if you can still serve the people, how can I say no? And with people like Mike and the other rest of the Commission, I'm sure that we will be able to bring about good things happening, not just for our parks, for our recreation, for historic preservation, but for everything that Parks and Recreation is involved with. I've been working with the mayors already, communicating with them. You know, this lack of, when do we open parks? How come bathrooms are locked? How come they're not mowed? I mean, we have some parks that are in villages that belong to the Department of Parks and Recreation, and I'm working with them, whether they can, we can give them jurisdiction and let them take care of it because they are right there. They're right there in the village.
Yes, we have a few mayors who've done that.
In Alahan for the other, there's so many parks that they can take care of, even recreational facilities. So we'll work on those, and I can assure you all of that, that we will.
There are great partnerships with organizations and mayors who have adopted these facilities, who have wanted to take it on themselves, and we welcome that as well to take a little bit off your plate. We know that, you know, 53 parks and recreational facilities across the island is a lot for the limited amount of resources that you have. And we're also thankful for the Park Patrol who have really stepped up to try to, to limit any kind of vandalism. So I want to give them the kudos that they deserve as well, being very proactive.
And I invite all of you to their, the first, first-ever training cycle that the Parks Patrol people have gone through. Their graduation is next Friday, and hopefully you can show up. And like I said, this is the first ever, not just for the Department of Parks and Recreation, but for Guam. And those nine people, we're trying to augment them with five more, we're even recruiting starting today, Parks Reserve Security, police personnel, and there's people on the list that want to come and join our reserve, so we're working on that, but it's, it's a good thing that's happening. This vandalism and this graffiti in our parks and in our recreation, we've got to stop it, and the only way to stop it is to be more visible in all of these places with our Park Police.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Sablon. I hope that you will continue to support and promote the reservists as well as that was the work of the late Senator Pito Terlahi and myself to implement that, and I hope that you'll continue with that. We look forward to this cycle of Park Patrol next Friday. Thank you very much, Dr. Rabago. Thank you for your commitment and your service. I look forward to moving your appointment in the next session. I hope that you're up for the challenge, and your family and your friends will continue to support you as you have a lot, a lot to get working on.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay. And we are done with this hearing now. The time is 3:40. If anyone wishes to provide written testimony for the appointment of Dr. Michael J.S. Rabago or for the appointment of Mr. Christopher Elsie Duennius, they can submit to my office, office of Senator Shelton at guamlegislature.org, or deliver it here to the Guam Congress Building in Haguenya. Soodus Masi, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everyone, Happy New Year. Thank you.